Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. You will see on the screen that we have three council persons. And we have Mayor Richard Island joining us by Zoom. So with that, we do have form. And to start the meeting, I would like to acknowledge that the municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that the we are on the area that is on Treaty Six and Eight Territories, as well as the Jasper House Métis District. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Danzay, Essentouche, Winnawatt, Essentouachi, Naya, Nahaya, Ewak, Anasunabi, Sepwetnik, Stony Dakota, and Mountain Métis and Métis. And councillors, I refer you to the agenda for today. Calling the meeting to order here at nine thirty-two. Are there any additions to the agenda or changes? Mr. Gibbon?
Deputy Mayor Malik, I understand that with our size of council that we have today that we're going to lose some folks at one o'clock. Our auditor was only able to present at one o'clock. So the administration would like to remove item seven point seven. Certainly, council has the information there. We will be looking to counsel the schedule of a special council meeting in order to approve the annual audited financial statements. So the information is there and it's a part of the record. But we will be looking to cancel that out just in respect of the time that we have available today. And the limited availability of our auditor to present. Administration will work with the auditor to have them come to the special council meeting and make the same presentation.
And with that removal and suggestion of a special council meeting, is there a particular time for that special council meeting?
Deputy Mayor Malik, the administration has looked ahead. We have a fifth Tuesday in this month. In the morning, we have an intergovernmental meeting with Arts Canada. The afternoon was free, and so administration was targeting the afternoon of March thirtieth, probably from one P M. Start time. And then we would have two items. That would be a public special council meeting in order to adopt the audited consolidated financial statements. And there would likely be one other end business.
Thank you for that. So I would believe that under new business, we would remove seven point seven as the presentation of the audited consolidated financial statements and replace it with seven point seven. Scheduling of a special meeting for the purpose of receiving the financial statements. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, sir.
I understand as well, there is a request for a in-camera session, which would then take us from item eleven adjournment to become item twelve. And item eleven would be in camera at the request of council, and that's at the request of administration, and that is regarding labor relations. Are there any other changes to the agenda by councillors? Not seeing any with those two additions. Could I get an approval of the agenda for today, April twenty-third, with the deletion of seven point seven presentation of the audited consolidated financial statements replaced by seven point seven schedule of a special meeting to receive the audited financial statements, and that special meeting being April thirtieth at one thirty in the afternoon. And the addition of an in-camera session. Councilor Hall, thank you. Olds and Fiddler. And that is clear unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is the April ninth Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was approved on April sixteenth. Item four point one, any business arising from the minutes? Not seeing any business arising from the minutes. I believe that since those have been approved, we can move on to delegations. We have no delegations scheduled, and we have no visitors in the gallery. We can now move on to correspondence. I have not been advised for any correspondence. That's correct. Thank you. We'll move on to new business, and that would be the I T Master Plan. And we have a presentation by the Perry Group Consulting. And I believe online, we have Susan Chase. Welcome to the meeting. And I will, is it introduction to this, or are we going right with Susan Chase?
Deputy Mayor Malik, maybe I'll just briefly acknowledge the work of Director Melchuck and our I T Coordinator Joe Campbell, who've been working closely with the Perry Group. The I T Master Plan development was approved in the 2023 capital budget. And the admin team has been working closely with their consultants over the past number of months in order to come up with a plan that Susan's going to present on behalf of the group Tuesday.
Welcome, Susan. Look forward to the presentation.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I appreciate your time, council, today to go through this. I just want to confirm, am I sharing my screen, or is the clerk showing the presentation?
I believe you're sharing your screen.
Then I shall do just that. Sorry, take a second here. All right. And to confirm, you can see it okay, correct?
We're good.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciated the opportunity to come work with the municipality to help them figure out how to better leverage technology, how to use technology, and where it can take the municipality as it moves forward. There's certainly a lot of challenges today in the world of public service. And we believe strongly at Perry Group that technology can help with that. Just very briefly, Perry Group, we're a very small firm. We are based out of Ontario, although we do have clients across the country, only Canadian. And that's a choice. And we specialize in municipalities, so we only deal with municipalities or municipal adjacent agencies. All of us have worked for municipalities. For example, myself, I have been working in municipal I T government for, oh, pushing twenty-five years now. I've been an I T director, a C I O of a couple of different municipalities, so we bring that kind of knowledge and experience forward. Just quickly, I'm going to go through these slides quickly. Certainly, if council has a question, please just let me know. Basically, our approach, we go three-stage approach. We do discovery, which is a really important part of it. It's the bulk of our projects typically. This is where we ask a lot of questions, find out what's going on, assess the current state. You'll see the blow up there of the discovery process here. Take a look at all the documentation. We can get our hands on everything from budgets to process reviews, all that sort of stuff. We have a number of interviews that we conduct. We worked with the leadership team on setting some visions, finding out what's their goals, what are their objectives. And of course, we meet with departments as well, so we want to get down to the business process level, the service delivery. It's not just about the technology. It's about how can technology really help with the service delivery. We did a staff survey, so we got staff's perspective. So those who weren't able to join us on the interviews, because of course, not everybody is able to, but we get their perspective and their feedback on what they'd like to see. We also talked with council, and I have a slide on that, as you know, so we'll get to that in a minute. We did some benchmarking, some comparison with others. This is always a little bit of a tricky thing because not, you know, municipalities are all kind of the same, except they're all very unique as well. And we certainly acknowledge the uniqueness of Jasper, and we took that into consideration as we prepared the strategy. Then we have our assessments that we do, the various technical assessments, and I'll get into more details on those. Once we complete discovery, this leads us to the strategize phase, and this is where we start to look at, okay, how does this come together? What's going to work for the municipality? It's not one size fits all ever, so we do take a look and see how can we make this work. And we talk to you about what the big issues are, and we do deep dives on some of those points to try and find out how best can we come up with the plan, which is the final stage and what we're going to talk about here. So according to the RFP and in confirming with staff, we know the goals of the project were really to assess the current environment, take a look at what we're doing, and then how can we do better? Compare us with industry trends, what's going on out there, what are some of the peers, our peers doing? We wanted to set a goal, like I said, some goals and objectives for the future, and then the strategy becomes the steps on how to get there. We really needed to establish priorities because there are so many things to be done, and that's in every municipality we go to, certainly not just Jasper. There's too much to be done. So how do we prioritize? And how do we put into place a mechanism for future prioritization? Because things happen all the time, whether it's new legislation that comes down or some situation that happens that requires readdressing our priorities. And then we came up with the roadmap, and we talked back and forth a few times in order to get that. So as these restated the goals, this is what we tried to keep in mind as we move forward. I said earlier that discovery is quite detailed and quite involved, so what I've done here in these slides is just provided you with some summary of these findings. So overall, staff and management are highly supportive of digitization. And by digitization, we mean leveraging technology to better deliver services and to make it easier to do their job. And they're also very willing to support the change. We don't always find that in municipalities. Oftentimes, especially in government, you know, we're a little bit resistant to change. We've been doing it this way. This is the way the process has always been, so we don't want to change. We didn't find that in Jasper. People are very willing to change, to make things better, to improve their way. The website is an excellent source of information to the public. It's come together really nicely. It's strong, it's easy to read, and it's easy to navigate. You have several key business solutions in place. There tend to be market leaders as well, which is a good thing to see. And they help really automate and improve services. The I T coordinator is very responsive to staff issues, though he is only part-time, and that's an issue, and we'll talk about that further. And if you've read the report, you know our take on that one. But we did get a lot of really positive feedback about the work that he does. You've also got a very longstanding relationship with your managed service provider, Trinas. They help with a lot of the bigger issues that are going on, as well as the day-to-day issues that are happening. And as well, we found those business solutions that I mentioned earlier, they do tend to be standalone, and by that we mean they're not working together with other business systems. So data tends to be duplicated. There's some redundancy happening, duplication of effort, that sort of thing. So that's a concern and something that we wanted to address moving forward. Now getting into some of the key challenges and really trying to highlight these here for council. Technology work is really not being strategically planned holistically across the organization. It tends to be being planned around, you know, what the department needs, what that specific department or division can do right now. Of course, they plan it because there's the budget process that it has to go through, but we're not looking at things, like I said, or organizational-wide up to this point. Training has come up a number of times in the interviews and the surveys, so we've really found one of the challenges is people don't really know what to do. They've had their initial training on some of these products, but no further training. So they're not learning how to fully leverage these products and solutions that they have in place. Connectivity is an issue. I mean, in the municipality, I was last working in full time. We had a major issue with connectivity, so fully understand that, and it does inhibit your opportunities to take advantage of some of the technology solutions that are available and to really modernize the work and the work that's being done. And that's reiterated in one of the other, the next one of the other boxes here. The field staff don't really have access to suitable mobile tools, making them more effective and having less redundancy as they're gathering data out in the field and trying to do their work. A lot of that is because of that connectivity, and I know people are trying to do it. There's work being done, but it really has become an inhibitor as we move forward. Many of your key processes are still very paper-based, so even if there's a solution in place, people are still collecting the data using paper, or they're outputting the data using paper, that sort of thing. There's some areas where there is no technology solution in place at all to help a business process, and it's still very paper-based. That just takes time. You know, it takes more staff time to do this, so they're focused on really that paperwork as opposed to working with the customers, your users, whether that's a resident, a local business, whatever, or even each other. So that's a bit of a challenge. We also found, we have a slide later on to further emphasize this, level of investment in technology has been low. It's really not sustainable long-term. As we become more and more dependent on technology, it's becoming part of everybody's lives more and more. It becomes very difficult to do so without any kind of firm investment in in the technology and supporting that technology. Some of the key takeaways from the survey, and this is just highlighted, staff, of course, have the full survey results, so if there's anything more needed, certainly that's available. But some of the key takeaways, staff are kind of dissatisfied with their technology experiences. Some of the technology they have is a little bit clunky. It doesn't quite fit the need. It's been in place perhaps too long. Maybe the device they have doesn't allow them to access it properly, so that came across. They would like, again, more training. They want to be able to better understand what's going on with their technology. How can they improve it? How can they take greater advantage of it? Now, even though I said earlier on that your organization as a whole seemed very ready for change, majority of staff didn't feel change-ready. They feel that there's some resistance to change. They're not getting the support. But that's because of budget constraints or a lack of some of the foundational systems that are in place. So they find it hard to be able to move forward with some digitization, like going, moving towards online services, that sort of thing, because they're kind of told no. So that's where they're feeling that there is a resistance to change. I'm not sure it's actual resistance as opposed to these barriers because of the lack of investment. We asked about I T operations, a number of questions, and overall, you know, staff are pretty happy with it. They feel that I T communicates very well when there are system outages, when there are any kind of problems, but they're looking for more. That's, it's as simple as that. Their satisfaction is lower for other services such as communications, adoption, that sort of stuff. They're really looking for more. And this gets highlighted again when we asked about I T support in general. Very, very high. They're very pleased with the support they get. Response time is very well-received, which is quite remarkable considering, of course, it is a part-time role. I mentioned at the top that we did reach out to council, and we asked you for your thoughts. We gave you a few questions and asked for some of your feedback, and we did receive some. So just to summarize that, of course, council is very concerned about cybersecurity and privacy protection. That's, that's an absolute must, and you should be concerned about it. Things are fine, I would say. There's some improvements to be made and further enhancements, but you should be concerned because every day this is changing, and we're hearing all the time about issues. But you're not hearing directly from any of your residents or local businesses about being able to interact online or digitally within the municipality. And this is interesting because, you know, we find this is kind of mixed right now with municipalities. Some, and it doesn't matter whether they're rural or urban, but some do hear quite loudly from their residents. And again, I mentioned businesses or developers as well. They want to interact more digitally with the municipality, but you're not hearing that yet. And so that's something to consider. So that means we, you know, we don't go that far in the actual master plan and roadmap that we develop. But you do believe very much that technology is key to achieving your goals. You think it's very important to be able to communicate and to hear from from your constituents what's going on. You'd like it to be more affordable. You're looking for solutions like free public Wi-Fi in some of the municipal locations, certainly. And you have some interest in some of the emerging technologies such as artificial intelligence. How can that benefit the municipality? You think you can great, make greater use of technology with some of the services that are being offered, but you're not too sure where just yet. So we appreciated that response from council because, again, it did help inform us. We have a number of assessments that we do to take a look at the technology, and if you think about it, our technology model as kind of a house, and really what it's about is we've got the foundational layer, so that's your platform layer down at the bottom here. That's all, you know, the connectivity, how the servers work, the networks, all those bits, the devices, you know, how people are really accessing the technology. If that foundation isn't strong enough, then it makes it really hard to add the top layers, such as the business solutions layer. Well, you know, that's your financial systems, H R systems, asset management systems, those sorts of things. Next up, we've got the integration and data layer, and that's how these systems work together. And I mentioned earlier that we don't have a lot of integration right now at Jasper, so that means these systems are working standalone. So we've got duplication. Address, for example, is stored in multiple locations and in perhaps multiple ways as well, and that starts creating some problems. And the customer-facing layer, of course, is the top, so how do we serve the customer, the end customer using technology, and how does that all fit together? We've also got this piece on the left-hand side there, the corporate posture. And the corporate posture is our policies, looking at cybersecurity, governance, and that sort of thing. So using this as our guide, we have assessed using the model as a house here, some of the challenges that Jasper is facing. Now I'm going to skip over this one. I want to get over to the more detailed slide. So this here is actually the assessment that we do. And then we just, we visualize it as a house to make it, it just makes more sense to most people this way. Sorry, was there a question? Nope. Okay, so this technology model here, there's a lot of red. Yeah, there is, absolutely. I would like to highlight to you, a lot of this red is because many of these processes are ad hoc. That means they're not documented. They're not put in place in a proactive way. They're very reactive. And that comes down to a part-time person in a very reactive mode and staff trying to deal with things as they come up. So this strategy is going to help and is already going to change a lot of these things to the orange or yellow colors, which will be very helpful. But there's concerns here, and we wanted to address this, and this is how we're going to come up with the roadmap moving forward. There are some greens, so there's again up in the customers-facing layer, and that's how I mentioned earlier that the website is in pretty good shape. And that's why we see that, and the brighter yellows as well, so that all shows us that things are in decent shape. The darker orange means that there's some major work needed. Sometimes that major work needed is just an integration. Sometimes it's because we're lacking support. Sometimes there's not a plan in place. There's different reasons for that. So there are some concerns here, and this is what we tried to address. We did some comparisons, and so really just to highlight this here, we looked at some local municipalities of similar sizes. You'll see it's a little bit all over the place. Do you want to mention here that we have the city of Olds, they have a new I T coordinator. It was approved in 2023 as a result of a review similar to this one here. They do use professionally managed services and G I S professional services as well. Banff, they had a cybersecurity incident, which resulted in a review and a significant investment in technology. So a couple of the others, Crosnest and Lac Le Biche, a little bit smaller, but they have had, they're relatively new cities and have grown up differently. So you'll see here, just highlighting Jasper. Yeah, you're small, but you're still quite under-invested in technology, and quite significantly, if you look at the I T spend per F T E or the I T operating budget percentage. And again, there is more details. This next slide shows a few of these details here. We have the graph there that you could see. We have a range that we've seen across our clients that seems to be more more common, if you will, between two and a half to four and a half percent of the operating budget should be spent on technology. Gartner recommends actually for state and local municipalities that it should be at least four point three percent. Jasper, we've got quite low at less than one percent. We did further analysis. We had some conversations, of course, with staff about these numbers to try and make sure they're right, and it really comes down to an underinvestment in technology. We also did a quick look, because Jasper is so unique as really that kind of resort municipality, we took a closer look at Banff and Whistler. And we did find, you know, again, it's still, it's underfunded somewhat. I don't want to dwell too much on this. It's just, we felt there was a uniqueness. And rather than just doing a full, almost that generic comparison with other municipalities, if we looked at more similar municipalities, how did Jasper rate? So really, we believe strongly, because we've seen it, there is significant risk to underfunding technology. We've got a reputational situation where constituents will say, well, you know, what are you doing? Why can I not do this online? Staff, it's sometimes harder to recruit staff. I'm working with the municipality right now, actually on the east coast, and they're really challenged because their technology is quite behind. And when people come for interviews, they find out that, you know, they're going back to paper. They're like, yeah, I don't need to do that. So that's an issue, especially when we talk about the younger workforce coming in. They don't know a world without computers and how to use it. So we really want to make sure that we can do that. Underfunding technology also makes it harder to find the data. I've mentioned a couple of times that we've got these different business solutions, and they're not integrated really, and so we've got some duplication. It becomes harder to figure out, well, what's the most accurate source? What's the most current source of data? How do we figure out what it is that we need to do? How do we pull out this information from our systems? I also mentioned earlier, staff are looking for technology to be able to use that more to make their jobs easier, to give them greater access to things. So without automating some of these processes, these work tasks will continue to be very manual and will take time. And we think that's wasting valuable staff time. No municipality has enough resources, that's for sure. So if they're spending so much time doing simple data entry or trying to find something online as opposed to building that relationship with the customer, doing the analytics that we really need them to do, that provide that real value add, that's a problem. And then, of course, the return of investment, as these things, technologies get out of date or start, stop being helpful, they just become costly, very expensive back-center costs. So we did, we are recommending, of course, increasing the budget. But what we tried to do was step it up for you so that you can, we know, we get it, right? Municipality, you don't have this kind of money to put all in right away, so how can we do it pragmatically and thoughtfully? And so we've come up with a plan that actually increases it ever so slightly. So we're starting from the less than one percent. So in the first year, can we get up a little bit over one percent? In the second year, can we get it up to two percent, and so on, and you'll see that in the actual roadmap that we have prepared. One of the other things that we absolutely found in the I T was, I've mentioned a couple of times about the I T organization, they're lacking the resources, but also governance. Again, everything is very ad hoc. And so what we wanted to do is try to elevate the decision-making process so that it is handled by the leaders in more cases. Some things, of course, the I T coordinator and your managed service provider should continue to make decisions on. You don't want to be talking about what kind of server to get or anything like that, but we do want to see the governance committee or leadership team putting in standards so that there are those best practices being understood. And an acknowledged really work plan that people can know what's coming up and know what the priorities are. So that brings us to the strategy. Any questions on our current state or discovery findings?
Any questions from councillors? Thus far, through the presentation, I'm impressed with the multi-step increase to I T operational funding, where it's a staged approach for consideration going into future budget years as opposed to a lump sum getting to a certain point and being overwhelmed with potential projects. Is that part of the, the part of the philosophy of building on successes and doing what I would perceive to be the most important things first and which will then complement future spending and have the maximum productivity gains?
Absolutely. That's exactly it. So what we've tried to do when we developed the work plan, which I'll share with you next, is we have to have some prerequisites, if you will, done first, and then from there we can continue to build. So get those foundations, strong foundations in place, then build on there, and hence that, and it's also kind of pragmatic and responsible. Again, we understand you can't do a massive increase right away. You don't have the resources to implement it, first of all, or the capacity to implement all the You don't have the resources to implement it, first of all, or the capacity to implement all the changes. But it's just unrealistic when we're talking about tax dollars. You, we have to stretch it out like that and do it in phases.
And I, she councillor Paul, and then I'll recognize Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I have a question, but first I just want to, I think it's important to acknowledge, as you mentioned this a few times, that even though our IT specialist, Joe Campbell, is only for a time, he's doing a really good job. I just wanted to acknowledge that with him in the gallery. My question is around connectivity and like, I know it's not, it's kind of out of our hands, but how do we solve that?
I think there's a number of ways. Perhaps I can hold that question. We're going to get into some of the key recommendations next and we can talk to it there. Or I can, I can, well, let me just answer it right now. Let's just go there. It's a tough one and a lot of municipalities deal with it. What we've talked with the CIO about and with the IT coordinator is having conversations with neighbors and the province, of course, right? You've got the provincial initiative underway in Alberta. So how can we better leverage it? What, and the CIO and I have, like I said, talked about a bit and we've promised each other, we're going to talk about it a bit more. I would like to share my experiences. What I ended up doing in my last municipality where we had this issue is I talked with the other local stakeholders in the area, if you will, private businesses as well as public businesses. And we got together and we formed a task force to try and solve the solution. And in the end, we did, which was super cool. And it wasn't the right solution for everybody, no, but it was the right solution for us at the time. And there's other examples of municipalities who have had to do that. You almost have to take it in your own hands to try and figure it out. And I'm not talking about building the infrastructure necessarily, it's about partnering more. So we do have an item in the roadmap about starting to address these issues, getting a better handle on them and having the conversations.
Thank you. Georgia?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you to Ms. Chase. Thank you for the presentation, I'm enjoying it. If I could take you back to, it's slide 11 of your presentation. It's the financial and staffing metrics. That would be the one. I noticed that Whistler, which I, I'm going to assume is Whistler BC, has the highest spend per full-time equivalent. So they're spending something like $2.5 billion by my calculation. And they've got 11 and a half of their own IT staff. Croznest is about third in spending, but quite high. And they have zero staff, so I assume that is all outsourced. Are you able to give us any sense of whether the municipality and its citizens are better served by a really high level of internal IT staff? Or are we potentially better off with outsourcing the IT? And I know it comes in later again, and you've talked about coordinating through a coordinator. But generally speaking, when we, when I see that sort of difference, Whistler doing it all in-house, it would appear, but maybe not. But Croznest Pass, doing nothing in-house, what are the differences there that we should be looking at?
So, yeah, that's, it's always an interesting question. And based on what we've seen with other clients in our research into these kind of comparisons, it's really necessary, what we usually recommend, Mayor, is a combination. We think there is the need for some in-house resources. First of all, because they will know your culture the best and how best to serve and how to be that immediately responsive to the situations that are going on. We also believe that the in-house staff are best at managing the contracts with the managed service providers or the vendors or whoever. But we also believe very strongly that you have to have those partners because you can't do it all anymore. There is no municipality that can afford to have all in-house staff. I'll point to cybersecurity as the number one topic right now. Everybody needs to have, not everybody, you need to have a specialist in cybersecurity, absolutely. The larger municipalities will have somebody in-house to do the immediate tracking, the training, the monitoring of the logs, but they will absolutely have partners who they subscribe with or work with in order to overall manage the security environment, because you just simply can't afford them, most municipalities. So there is always that kind of partnership. When it comes to business solutions, you will have your in-house expertise, who know how the solution works best with your particular business process, but you rely very heavily on the vendor for that other level of support and for upgrades and that sort of thing. So it really is a combination. And what, how that combination bears out tends to be very unique to the municipality. But I would say you cannot succeed if you're all in-house. And you will struggle if you're all outsourced as well. We've just seen that happen too many times. People always end up, municipalities always end up bringing some in-house expertise as well as having the outsource.
Thank you for that.
Anything further, Marilyn? I do, on the multi-step increase of IT operational funding, we, you know, it is very easy to get caught up in acronyms. And M365 initiated. Could we have a definition of M365?
Of course. That's the Microsoft 365 product, and that is the online, the cloud version, if you will, of the Office Suite. So what Microsoft done, has done in recent years is move that entire suite to the cloud because it's such an administrative burden, if you will, keeping it up to date and keeping it current for any, any business, let alone municipalities as well. So rather than having your, for example, email server in-house, if you will, it's out in the cloud now so that it's easier upgraded, there's greater storage capacity, greater flexibility, adaptability of it. But it is a subscription service, so you do pay for it per user, per license. And most organizations are moving towards 365. And that's why we're recommending it here.
And as such, you save on the hardware cost of making your own server?
Yes, exactly. You would save on your hardware costs. Licensing, it tends to be the same, if not even a little bit more expensive, because you get that greater level of service. But what you get is greater access to even more products typically. And you get greater access to storage capacity. So a number one complaint we always hear are the limits on my email inbox. Once you move to 365, those limits are gone. It ensures that security is kept even more up to date, more current, because it's not dependent on your staff doing it. It's handled by Microsoft. But it's, it can be at least the same price, like I said, if not a little bit more expensive. And it tends to now have to shift to your operating budget versus your capital budget, which for some municipalities is a challenge as it shifts. Once it gets there, it's typically okay, but making that change from a capital cost to operating is hard. So we are recommending it for Jasper as part of a disaster planning initiative, if you will, because it moves everything out to the cloud, people are able to access it more easier from wherever they are.
So another opportunity for mitigation in case of a catastrophic loss?
Exactly, yeah. So in, for example, when you, when the municipality had the fire, what was it, last year? And the server had to be moved from Jasper to the managed service provider site, you wouldn't have to worry about things like that anymore, right? Because it's already in the cloud. And you, again, able to access it from anywhere. As long as you've got connectivity to the internet, you would be able to access your entire office suite of products and, and depending on where the network storage, depending on where that is.
Thank you. We'll have you continue if there are no other questions.
Okay, thank you. So some of the key recommendations we have is we really do want to move the IT coordinator position to a full-time role. There's, we've got a lot of projects that we want them to execute. But it's also really being able to work more closely with your managed service provider and really to provide a more corporate approach to all the vendor management. So right now, all the departments are really managing the different vendor relationships. We'd like to see that centralized a little bit more so that there's a better understanding. There's usually some budget savings to be had with this kind of more centralized management. Not significant, but there will be some. But also be able to conduct better planning and oversight. So ideally, not be quite so reactive, you know, be called upon when there's problems and just deal with the problems. We'd like to see that position be able to be a little bit more thoughtful, a little bit more proactive. We were recommending a more formalized contract with your managed service provider. Previously, what you had had was a little bit more ad hoc again. It was kind of a time and materials. We understand that is very close to being signed, if not signed already. So this is almost a moot point at this point. Another key recommendation is to constitute an IT steering committee. We're recommending this be S L T for now to get started. Usually that's the best place for it to start, but that they dedicate time on, in their meetings, perhaps once a month, once every two months, to deal with technology-specific agenda. We've provided some information back to them and have offered further information as well as this discussion goes on. But it's really about making decision-making corporately and setting the priorities. A key recommendation of our, the master plan and the roadmap is really strengthening that platform later, layer. Get those different bits and pieces all in place so that it is that strong foundation from which we can build in subsequent years. We're looking at developing an interconnectivity plan for all the facilities. So this is not broader internet access council. This is getting your facilities all connected properly. So right now, some aren't quite, or they're a little bit, not quite as good as some of the others. So we really wanted to see that come together. We also would like to see some standards be set. I mentioned that earlier, but for your server and network standards, right now, again, with the ad hoc approach, we're finding different models, different products, and that can sometimes make it hard for these to work together. So establish some standards, in the end, it pays off. We're also recommending that the municipality adopt cloud solutions as a preferred model. So that means essentially, you're looking, you give a higher prioritization through the evaluation criteria to a cloud solution. And that's because we want to move away from those on-premise servers and that environment that's very difficult for the municipality to manage and to maintain. Moving things into the cloud is, is not the be-all and end-all by any stretch. There are challenges with that certainly. But we feel very strongly for a municipality like Jasper, with some of the challenges that you do have. The more things we can move to the cloud, the better opportunity you have for continuity of business in case of any kind of emergency situations. It also provides for a better, easier and better support of these products. One of the other things we've recommended is to consider a virtual CIO or advisor role. We're seeing a lot of municipalities are moving in this direction right now. So it's somebody who you have, you know, either on time and materials or on contract, who can help with negotiations with your managed service providers, who can help lead you through some of the strategy decisions that need to be made. It can be a very small budget amount, it could be larger. Some municipalities, there's, their technology leader is a full-time contract person. We're not recommending that for Jasper, but there are varying degrees. And we think it would be helpful for the municipality as they move forward. We set out six key areas of work in our roadmap. And so this is just kind of generalizing those. A key area focus is, of course, the infrastructure and operations. We think we need to look at cloud framework and technologies. Like I said, we want to establish that as a key strategy. IT policies and standards needs to be set. IT security is always a key program of work, no matter what, no matter where we go. It's always needs that clear focus. Another area for the municipality of Jasper is records and information management. There's a lot of data out there, there's a lot of information, how do we get better access to it? And then we want to also look at modernizing the business solutions. So as we created these programs of work, we dug a little bit deeper and have specific tasks in the roadmap. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail about all of these specific tasks. So if there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. What we did on this particular slide here is just gave a timeline for the business solutions area of focus. Again, this is just reiterating that we phased it out so that not everything is happening the first or second year. You simply don't have the money or the resource capacity to do this. So we've tried to prioritize it out and it's based on the, some prerequisites, some things that need to be done first. One of the things I will highlight here, and we've got these kind of orange color highlights are kind of major things that need to be done before some of the others can be done, is looking at hiring potentially a second, a second person in IT to deal with the solutions, to deal with the data and all that application support. Again, emphasizing how we've phased things out over the years. These are the major projects that we have, including all of the projects. So this is again, where we've got things such as the IT steering committee, the policies. So we've tried to make 2024, because budget's already done, basically, is simplify it. So it's not big budget asks, but they are big asks, they're big changes for the organization to move forward. And then in 2025, 2025 and beyond, we start looking at budget items. So we fully acknowledge with this plan that every one of these projects and tasks are dependent on the annual budget process and council's decisions. You set, of course, the priorities for the organization. So we've tried to build this flexible enough that if something can't happen in the year we've recommended, it can happen in subsequent years, or maybe it needs to have some tweaking. And so we've tried to write the whole, the whole master plan in, in that light. So we believe some of the critical success factors to achieving this is greater investment in technology. So we'd like to see the IT funding increase. The organizational model specifically, moving the part-time coordinator to a full-time role. We think that strategic IT leadership role is very important. And the IT planning and oversight, that governance model is also very important. And of course, we think critical to success is locking down that third-party support, that managed service provider that we've talked about. And each of these things kind of need to happen in order to move forward in some way. The report also gets into some other opportunities, some of the future things. You know, we heard a lot about some of this stuff from staff. So once we get these foundations built and start moving forward a little bit, then can, how can we really start moving forward? So things like the training, how do we better address that? GIS strategy, geographic information systems. Right now, you've got an amazing partnership with Jasper Parks, works really, really well. But we think it can be more, you can leverage it even more. So a GIS strategy would take a look at how best can we leverage GIS? Where does this spatial data come into play even more? Digital vision and service delivery. Once we have all these foundational pieces in place, how can we start looking more at online services? Getting that digital delivery happening so that staff have that opportunity for greater leveraging the technology, but also the customers out there have greater access to online services from the municipality. The internet connectivity strategy we have as a recommendation, talked about that already. Implement IT service management practices, that's what ITSM means. It's in detail, of course, in the strategy. And these are just those best practices around managing your technology. Everything from network management, incident management, to how we're, how we're providing software or hardware and software support. We think it's important to enhance the customer experience overall. And we want to position the municipality to be able to really take advantage of emerging trends. Staff are already looking at some of these things. So the Internet of Things, sensors, artificial intelligence, how can we best use that for the municipality to be able to be more efficient in operations and delivering those levels of service that the customers are really looking for? And that's the end of my presentation, so happy to answer any other questions. Thank you for your time.
And as well as the presentation that's backed up by the IT master plan document, which dated April of 2024. And really, it's a number of the topics that you have brought up through the presentation. Quite a robust plan going forward. Councillors, any other questions at this point? Being done, I appreciate Susan, the extensive work and the presentation. And I'm now looking for a councillor to make a recommendation to council regarding the receiving and I guess approval of the IT master plan as presented. Councillor Kelly?
I can make that motion, I can, I recommend that council build the IT master plan.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion? No, thank uh Mister, uh sorry. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um my only question relates to um the use of the word approve. If we approve the I T master plan. Have we approved each of the recommendations and in particular um moving to? Three percent of of funding based on the operational budget. Like I, I I appreciate the report. I I agree that we should move in this direction, but by approving a plan at this stage. Have we committed to the specifics of that plan? And I I did notice in the plan there, there was a great um line on page nine, I think, of of the actual um. Document that that we haven't really looked at, um but it says. Commit but be mindful that concessions need to be made along the way. Um I don't know whether that grants us any particular relief. But I am concerned about whether at this stage we're committing ourselves to. Um a spending program that has not gone through a budgetary process at all.
And with that comes her, uh or sorry, Mayor Ireland, I'll recognize uh C E O Given.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Melnick uh for Mayor Ireland. Uh absolutely, that's a reasonable question and and uh you know, the sort of phrasing of approve means that council has received, understands the context of the plan. And is uh acknowledging that that should guide administrative business planning going forward. Uh but as put forward in the staff R F D that's attached as the cover to the presentation. Under the financial section, uh we note that if approved, the I T master plan will be used to guide administration, business planning and for future budget cycles. And that adoption of the plan does not presume approval of future funding. Uh or financial spending. Uh implement, implement, excuse me, implementation and financial implications. Trying to say both of those at the same time is a bit of a challenge. Uh those will be presented annually. So any of the projects uh positions or or you know. Uh concepts that are here that are outside of the existing twenty twenty four budget um would become, would inform. The way administration would plan the twenty twenty five budget. And the im- the twenty twenty five budget is still subject to council's approval. Um so this really establishes the roadmap. It does not give administration carte blanche to run all the way down the route. Um and it also uh does not suggest uh does not permit us to moving at any particular speed. If any, in any budget year, for whatever reason, council says, we can't do that at this time. Um that is uh you know, a suit that certainly council authority. Um and this plan doesn't, doesn't suggest otherwise. So we're asking for council adoption for confirmation that this is the right plan. And that how quickly we move along this plan will be subject to council's regular decision making and annual budget processes.
Uh thank you for that, Mister Given, and and on that basis and with that understanding, I appear to vote uh in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Mister Given, and thank you, uh your worship. Any other comments on the motion? They're being done when they call a vote, all ones in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And again, thank you um. Ms Jason, and uh we do look forward to the implementation of this plan. Over time, it can only help our municipality in becoming more efficient and less vulnerable. And I would like to move on to the next item prior to taking a leave, but just to um. Keep everybody in the same mood. We are going to be running the this meeting right through lunch hour. Uh and a little too, only about one o'clock, we may finish early. But uh just so that individuals are aware, we have a uh. Uh uh an opportunity, your forum will be available till that time. So we want to move through the uh issue as the agenda. With some haste, but but also give each topic a an appropriate uh amount of time. So we're going to move on to seven point two traffic safety by law and uh Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. As I indicated um at the last council meeting, I intended to raise this today. Uh this matter has come to be um several times over the last year or so. Um most recently brought to my attention by our chief bylaw officer, Mister Jones. Um followed very closely um by um a resident drawing it to my attention. And the issue is um that our traffic safety by law has a prohibition against scooters. In the C B D. Um I am confident that when we pass that by law. When we mention scooters, we were thinking about um stand up scooters or kind of like a skateboard with a with a handle. That little kids use. And um our bylaw said, yeah, we don't really want those scooters and little children on scooters. On our streets in the downtown core. So they are prohibited. Technology, of course, has changed. There is at least one vendor in town that sells um. Electric scooters that are governed to go about thirty kilometers per hour, and there are lots of adults in town. Who have purchased those and they find now that they are prohibited from taking those scooters into the downtown area. Um because of that particular section, it's section one six point one six of our of our bylaw. Um Mister Jones has expressed to me that it is a troublesome matter for him. Um it's also made more difficult because there is actually no provincial legislation governing those scooters either. Um but it is problematic. Um I think Mister Jones would appreciate a solution that doesn't bring him into conflict with. Many of our residents and the resident who spoke to me indicated that. His scooter is his primary source of transportation. He has no vehicle, and so he takes his scooter downtown to buy groceries, for example. And he has been told by Mister Jones that that under the bylaw that is not um acceptable. So I think bylaw um would appreciate a solution if council is interested. Um from my perspective, uh we have about three options. We could just say. Um no, we're not particularly interested. If administration wants to bring this forward, they can do that. We could um potentially refer it um to administration for a report back to committee of the whole. Or we could refer it to potentially, at least to the legislative committee um to take a look at whether we should potentially amend the the bylaw. But that's the issue there. I- it's just the fact that our bylaw has not kept pace with emerging technology. Um we are in in other regards supportive of alternative forms of transportation. But in this case, um that form of transportation, electric scooters for adults. Are not permitted in our downtown core and it's. Caused a bit of uh tension between our own bylaw officers and the public. So I bring that to the attention of committee of the whole um and I would be um. Quite happy to make a motion based on some discussion about referring it. Either to administration for a report back or to legislative committee um to take a look at the issue and report back to committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Uh comments on you, councillors? Counselor Kellam Enby.
Um thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I'm in support of the move either to committee or to legislative committee. Um I think we have to stay up at times. Um electric sco- scooters for adults are. A way of alternative transportation and bicycles are allowed in the downtown core. So. I think, you know, as they follow the uh proper traffic laws, uh I don't see it as a huge issue. I do agree that I wouldn't like to see uh many schoolchildren on those scooters downtown. I think that would be dangerous, but I think um. If we have adults of um eighteen plus or the the darkness scooters, I don't see this as a huge issue.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I also would like to see this moved to administration or legislative committee, whatever. Might be quicker. I, this has come to to me as well from a couple residents in town that have the electric scooters. And I'm in full support of those as alternate forms of transportation to vehicles.
Thank you for that, and I would speak in support of a a motion moving this forward, whatever is most expedient and. I'm looking to Mayor Ireland um. Potentially um for a motion if he has one prepared to move this item forward.
I I do, in fact, uh thank you for that Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um if I may ask Mister Given whether. He would have a preference whether committee refer it to legislative committee or to administration. Um and I I will say that I favor administration because I. Mister Jones does not typically come to legislative committee and he would have the best input on this. I I think we have to. Rely on his expertise. So I I personally, I would prefer just to refer it to administration, but I understand that there are all sorts of. Capacity issues with administration as well. So I I'm just seeking some guidance from Mister Given on that requirement.
Mister Given?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh for Mayor Ireland, I would suggest that in the end. Um whether it's the legislative committee or committee of the whole, uh you're probably going to need some advice from administration. And so referring it to legislative committee just probably adds another step where legislative committee will probably ask administration for some advice. Um I think that we refer to administration for or back to committee of the whole is probably the most expedient. Um so it's likely the thing that's going to end up happening in the end.
Thank you for that.
Um I just, before you proceed, um and uh Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh this question actually is for Mayor Ireland. You had said there isn't legislation, legislation in the province for. Electric scooters. We, it's just our own bylaw. Is that correct?
That is my understanding now. Um private um scooters, I think, have escaped any legislation. There are cities that have got exemptions for things like bird and other scooter rentals within cities. But I think there is just a deficit of of law, even at the provincial level, to govern um these particular vehicles. But all we're looking at is our own. Bylaw and perhaps drawing a distinction between. The little kid scooters that we want probably to keep off the streets in the downtown core and other ones that we might be. Prepared to to permit down there. So it it would just be a bylaw issue as far as as I can see right now. But again, um Mister Jones might have opinions on that that. Are more reflective of his level of expertise.
And if I could recognize Director Nedon?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I uh support C E O Given's recommendation that uh referring this to administration is probably the most expedient way to. To get this resolved. And uh I would only like to add that um I I would like the opportunity to look at this more thoroughly with Mister Jones, but I can't say that. Um motorized scooters, both electric and gas powered, are considered prohibited miniature vehicles under the Alberta. Traffic Safety Act. So there is actually a hard and fast provincial legislation that prevents us from. Uh passing a bylaw that authorizes them. That is my preliminary uh assessment and input. I am on the uh Alberta municipality's website currently, which says. Uh personally, scooters are not allowed to operate on public sidewalks and roadways as they do not have provincial approval to operate beyond private property. And no municipality has the authority to issue a vehicle exemption for public roadways. So there's some pretty hard and fast uh legislation that. I would like a chance to review and we can get back to you in writing. And it has been a topic that has been raised by several residents. So I would like the opportunity to. Look at it a bit more thoroughly, get back to you with a report, and then we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Thank you for that. Um Mayor Ireland?
Uh uh thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick and thank you uh Director Nedon for that. Um very, very helpful information. I will then make a motion that committee of the whole direct administration to review. The traffic safety by law and in particular section sixteen point sixteen thereof. Prohibiting the use of e-scooters in the central business district. And return to committee of the whole with a report including any recommendations for amendment.
Thank you for that. Um councillors, any discussion on the motion? Fairly straightforward for administration. I will call a question, all ones in favor. And that is carried unanimously. And if you uh. Right now it is ten thirty five. We're gonna just take a quick five minute break. And then we'll continue on, so we will be returning at ten forty. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to return as wish to confirm we have. Quote with um Mayor Ireland. In uh in waiting to hear from Mayor Ireland, I would like to recognize that we had our I T. Um person here, Mr. Campbell, and they failed to acknowledge all of his efforts over the years in keeping us uh. Uh functioning. And um there were a number of incidents that did occur over the last. Year and a half um that did cause some I T challenges and and I think it's appropriate that. One of those individuals that responded uh in the background uh to continue to have the municipality operating and. Though so throughout the uh regular operating week when departments have challenges with printers and. Uh connectivity and so on. And I just would like to further rec- recognize his uh. His efforts and thank him for that. And I see Mayor Ireland is now on, so we uh will move on to item number seven point three. And uh that is the council representation on external boards and committees policy. And I'll be looking to Ms Nedon um for presentation of this item.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um this policy was uh reviewed by the legislative committee. And therefore comes to committee of the whole as a recommendation from that committee. And uh today we are looking uh for motion that suggests that committee recommend council approve policy A one oh seven. Council representation on external boards and committees as presented. Um this topic came up initially for uh following a request from a local group for council representation on their board. And uh that spurred the conversation around what kind of guidelines or criteria. Uh should council use to determine whether or not a council member should sit on those boards? And um this was referred to the strategic priorities review session that we had in February. And then following that, administration brought a draft policy to legislative committee. Currently, um council reassesses the list of committees at organizational meeting, but there's no hard and fast uh guidelines or criteria. So. This is an effort to um to standardize the process a little bit and give councils some guidance, this council and the next. Um to um what to look at and what to assess when uh making determinations as such. Uh the draft policy is attached, and like I said, this would be for recommendation to council to approve at the next regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillors, do we have any questions, comments? On the uh policy and uh. Recommendations from a group of these games in the legislative committee? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I don't have any comments or questions as I'm on this legislative committee and we've discussed this a lot, but I'd have to make the motion if there aren't any other. Uh questions or comments from either councillors or the mayor.
Counselor Kellam Enby?
I just wanted to congratulate the legislative, really, I think it's great work. Um, I do like the fact that it's greater than twenty-five hundred and the CEO for those in. Um, we have a lot of factors in here and it needs our strategic priorities. I think this is a great step forward.
Thank you for that. Uh, just looking at the screen for Mayor Ireland, I thought. Thought I saw you there, or are you, um? Commenting? Alright, so, um. I'm gonna ask councillor Hall to continue with her intention with the motion.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I, uh, remove that Committee recommend council approve policy A one dash. A dash one oh seven, council representation on external boards and committees as presented.
Thank you for that. We had some discussion and now we're going to call a question, all those in favor. And that is passed unanimously. And, uh, with that, we will move on to item seven point four, the Activity Centre. Jasper Activity Centre renovation project update. And, uh. Look to Director Reed for presenting this topic.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick and council. Uh, so indeed you do see the Q one or first quarter of renovation project update for two thousand and twenty-four. The recommendation is that Committee would receive the report for information. The alternative is, of course, that Committee receive the report and direct administrators provide further information as described by committee. Um, we, you know, skipped quite a lot of the background, which is available on our website under the major projects. Uh, tab, um, so, but in two thousand and nineteen, Municipality Jasper secured provincial and federal funding. Towards major renovation of the Activity Centre Arena and Fitness and Aquatic Centre. Through the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, final design decisions were made based on the most recent cost estimate and project was sent to tender. In July two thousand and twenty-three, the project construction began. The attached briefing note from our contracted project managers WSP. Describes our current state and some of the relevant milestones. The project continues moving forward and the major themes that I want to highlight today are. Overall, the project is still on track to finish within the approved budget in Q three of two thousand and twenty-four and. Q three, uh, ends in September. Just for clarity there. Um, and that's as anticipated in the construction manager baseline construction schedule. The aquatic centre site conditions that required multiple hazardous material abavements and significant redesign. Have been largely dealt with by the project team and therefore the aquatic centre reopening is scheduled for late Q two of two thousand and twenty-four. So late Q two, the end of Q two is June. Uh, this should coincide with high tourist season, so open for July and August. Impacts due to site conditions related to the elevator placement and existing building structure constraints have also been largely addressed. By the project team and, and so the Activity Centre lobby basement upper curling lounge completion remains in Q three. And that would coincide with arena and curling operation season start up. Um, tournaments and local games and practices at the arena were very well supported by the Arena Activity Centre and custodial staff. And those temporary external change rooms, thanks to the partnership with Tourism Jasper and their many local businesses. Um, when this report was written, the ice was going out that week, um, but the ice is out now. Uh, I could put in brackets here that we've begun our, what we call summer season or, or floor, ice floor. Uh, season, arena floor season. So we have, um, there's rollerblading and roller skating going on several times a week for drop-in. Uh, there's ball hockey available several times a week for drop-in and we've already had several rentals. I think there was a hilarious birthday party just last week. Um, so the floor is being used already. Um, and we're open, of course, to other opportunities. I'll, I'll throw a plug in for the Share Your Passion program. If somebody thought of something they could do with the floor of the arena. Or the floor of the curling, uh, they could certainly bring that idea to us and we'd work with them to see if we can make it a reality. Um, the fitness centre has remained open throughout the project thanks to the creativity of the project team and the effort to give staff and custodians. And I, I want to stop there. We used to do custodial work through contract and we have since brought that in-house. And I bring this up here on purpose because it's been a really good move. We get way more responsive service. Our contractors were, were good. There's no question about that. But we get more responsive service that we can then spread around during the day to the right areas that need it. And the staff are really invested and they work hard to meet the needs of the community. So it's been a great moment. Or a great, that's a great moment for me to mention what's been a great change in our operations. There is a necessary fitness and aquatic centre closure happening last week, uh, which went off very well. Um, they replaced in essence. A bunch of old electrical panels, uh, with a new electrical panels. And that kind of transition, you can't do while the power's on, obviously, and so they had to have a closure for that. And, and it's a good moment to say these types of closures will be occurring occasionally throughout the remainder of the project. Um, we haven't had that many closures thus far. Um, for this kind of episodic thing, we had the closure for the big, um, the, uh, steel flying in for the elevator. But now we're going to see more of these as they replace some of this back-of-house stuff. There's a lot of electrical wiring, as an example, that's getting replaced. And Administration and the project team continue to collaborate to minimize the impacts and delays and find efficiencies where possible. And then, of course, we put this note with every one of these reports, the Recreation Facilities renovation page. In the major project section of our website, continue to be, continues to be updated weekly. And we will continue to actively work on prioritizing access for our youth, maintain safety and engagement with stakeholders throughout the construction phase. And of course, this project has been well, um, documented for the strategic relevance and community health relationships and organizational excellence. And this project includes many new features and design elements that further our inclusivity and accessibility at our recreation facilities. And as such aligns with the Municipality's equity diversity inclusion policy very well under inclusion considerations. Under financial, as the project is still, uh, on budget, there's no change forecast to the approved budget timelines. And then there is the attachment with the nice colorful banners. And of course, I'm open to any and all questions and I'm, I'm hoping you guys have some good ones. As usual.
Thank you for that, Director Reed. I'll turn to Councillors if. There are any questions or comments on the report. And we'll also mention that there was an opportunity, um. Which would have been after this report was given, but we had an opportunity. As Councillors to tour the site and which we appreciate with our, our construction. Company and was, uh, I, I would say I was, I was impressed with the progress. Um, what I had seen by the Christmas and, uh, appreciating the amount of work that has to happen. In a bit of a unique environment where. Moving product around and, and, uh, using a, a small hole through the floor to deal with things in the basement. Getting things up and down, amount of effort that must occur. Um, but I would like to say thank you for that, uh. For that report and look to Councillors if there is any other comments. Councillor coming ahead of me.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, I just wanted to thank Mr. Reed and the team. It's great to see that it's, um, the pool's gonna open in, um. In June or in July. I do have questions. So normally we shut down again in the fall, then. Will that happen this year or will be all the maintenance will be done, but the pool will be open for this year?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall. That is an excellent question. One of the great things. Uh, sorry, one of the things we've capitalized on is this extended shutdown. So, um, I can give you a bunch of examples, uh, but. Well, a good one would be the tiling in the hot tub. So all the grout has been replaced during the shutdown. So to answer your question directly, we will not be having a fall shutdown in two thousand and twenty-four. The pool will be open for a full year before we have another shutdown.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I have a couple of questions, but, um, I'll start with the aquatic centre and I'm very happy to hear that. Will be open for a full year and hopefully that the Halloween bash, we can come back in full force. Um, there is some confusion in the community around what a universal change room is. Can you shed some light on that, please?
Absolutely, uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall. So, um. Some of the comments that I know are running around in the community right now, I can directly address. So. Very simply, there will be no more public nudity, no matter what your gender is. Every space that's a public space is a clothed space. And every changing space is a private space. Uh, there will be some that are as large as, uh. Well, let's say a small bathroom in a house. So some of those are just a bench and its door. So nothing but get in there, put your fitness gear on, go to the fitness centre. Uh, some of them are as large as a, a bedroom, a, a fairly large bedroom. One of the new code requirements that comes in this year that we were proactive about in specifying for our project. Is that public facilities require an adult change table. And this is a motorized unit that rises up and down as the needs of the user. And so we will have one of those that requires a fairly big room. Um, there are some rooms that have just a toilet in them, some rooms that have just a shower in them. And some rooms that we've been, I don't know, lovingly calling the family cabanas. Where you might take your whole family, you and your four kids. And you go into that room, everybody changes as a family and you take care of your kids' needs and. And there would be a shower in so many of those and. So the need of the user will be met in different rooms. And all of the lockers are in a public clothed space. So your clothing will not be locked in a room that you don't have access to, which is how our old family change rooms work, you may remember. Um, so, so you will take your stuff, you'll go into a room, you'll get changed, you'll take your stuff out of that room, put it in a locker. Let's say you come back and the room you got changed in originally is now full. You just take your stuff out of your locker, go to the next empty one. And that next empty one might be the biggest room in the, in the place. If that's, if we're at a really busy time and that's the only one available. Please go in there, get changed, come out. And move along. We believe with, uh, over thirty separate change spaces that we have. The capacity certainly for the ninety-fifth percentile usage. When we have full capacity in the summer, you may have to wait a few minutes to get a room to change. That might happen. I'm confident that it's not going to happen, but we are confident that we have the use case for three hundred and sixty days of the year. No problem. It might be five days where you might have to wait five minutes. How's that for answering your question, councillor?
That's great. Thank you very much. And if I can go on, um, also too, I. I mean, I have this is in there, but just the, we're on track to finish within the approved budget. A little bit behind schedule, but that is because of all these kind of surprises that. Can you, can you just speak to those a, a little bit as well?
Certainly, um, Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall. So as an example, we did find in the, uh, aquatic centre. We found first wall had asbestos. So you test that, you abate that abatement, uh, and you abate that asbestos and that takes time. Then we found the wall behind that wall also had asbestos. I will say that there were some spots where we had three different ceilings and I think there was one spot with four different walls. So that, of course, takes time. And so this is why the pool is delayed, but the whole project isn't. Because the pool itself is requiring extra time, but that doesn't stop the elevator from going in, doesn't stop. The downstairs accessible washroom at the Activity Centre. So. So the project itself is still on time. The pool is more delayed than we would all like. But a renovation does find trouble. There were giant concrete, um. Um, beams in the ground that were not on any drawings. Nobody knew they were there. And so you can't just leave that there. It has to be, again, dealt with in some way. And that's what we're referencing to when we say the, the site conditions require extensive, uh, abatement, but also redesign. Some of the posts weren't in the places that all the drawings showed them. So if we're planning to put a door there and there's a post in the way, that's not on any of the. As the, any of the known items that we have. So you have to redesign where that door goes. So this stuff does take time, but. To go back to your questions, the whole project is on budget and on schedule. Uh, when you have to redesign because a post just shows up where it's not supposed to be, that's what you have a contingency for. Um, we didn't, we, we have a contingency that we are, to be fair, uh, using up with these extra challenges that we find. Um, but that's what it's for. Uh, I think that's as far as I can go on that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, if I can continue unless there's other, I just have a couple more questions and thank you very much for that. And I was able also to take part in the tour last week, which. Um, I'm very happy with the progress and very happy with Carlson. Uh, moving to the arena, so I'm really happy to hear there's stuff happening in there right now. Will that be going all, all summer? And I'm assuming there's charges if you're not a youth, if you're a youth and you have a pass, is it, uh, all the drop-ins, uh, no charge for the youth?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick through the council. Also, yes, any, anyone with a, uh, you know, the passes through whatever mechanism, whether or not it's the. School age children passes approved by council, or if you have a family pass or an individual pass, all of the drop-ins are, are zero, or, or you, that's included in your pass. Uh, the drop-in fee, I don't have off the top of my head, but it's very minimal for, say, an out-of-town visitor. It's not. It's not, uh, cost prohibitive by any stretch because we're not providing any programming. There's, you know, very little maintenance to do on a concrete floor. Um, we do enforce a lot of, uh, some of the rules that you would expect for. Drop-in ball hockey. You can't just start slapping a ball around during sort of roller skating, uh, times and for roller skating, you can't bring, uh, roller skates that aren't. Gonna protect our surface, things like that. But, but yeah, the fees are either minimal or included in the memberships that are, that are many residents have.
Thank you for that. And you did touch on this, um, in your initial, uh, report, the Share Your Passion. Pro- uh, program we have with the municipality. So say, uh, community number wants to start up some kind of youth ball hockey league or, or something that's more scheduled out. Out of the times of the drop-in and that's a possibility?
Um, Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall, absolutely a possibility. It's a possibility in several fronts. I mean. Minor hockey or minor sports knows how to interact with us. If minor sports wanted to start a ball hockey league. Uh, we would, we, they'd just talk to Pete and, and we would have that happening pretty darn quick. Uh, if an individual also wanted to book times, very straightforward, Activity Centre contacts the front desk there. We could organize them to book a time which they could do for birthday parties or they could create their own league. Or even as we get on the tennis courts, right? Private individuals book the tennis courts to run tennis lessons. If there was a private individual interested in running roller skating lessons or, um, a conditioning camp for. For dry land camp for hockey, all of these things are possible. The, the final element about Share Your Passion, for Share Your Passion, it's when we think there might be a possibility of a partnership. And so. There have been, um, several times free zumba classes. That's a Share Your Passion partnership where the zumba classes are free and we work with the instructor. Uh, to make the partnership successful. Um, we, Share Your Passion is not for times when you're going to charge. How, how's that?
That's great. And I, one more, um, one more line of questioning, I will, just regarding the ice and. Uh, this is, uh, said to what I'm hearing around the community as well, um, just longer ice times over, throughout the year, especially with this renovation happening. I, I think that. Everybody wants to see ice in, I mean, I don't know, year-round is a possibility. Yeah, and in the beginning of this term, I know that we, um, decided against housing campers, not necessarily. Ending out-of-town camps in general, but housing campers. Because of code and that's absolutely fair and I'm supportive that, um, I was, I was supportive of that decision for sure. I'm curious how we might bring some of those camps. Back. Is there? I'm, I'm wondering where we're at or where the municipality is at with the partnership with the school board and potentially housing campers in the gymnasiums. I know. You know, summer games and winter games, that that's how they house campers. Is that? Where, where is that arrangement with, is, I, again, I think things sort of ended during COVID, but I just wonder if that's back on track to. Um, partner with the school board again?
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall, um. So two prongs, first prong about when we take the ice out and when we build the ice. So we do that based on need. Uh, demand of, so if, if, I mean, most of the time we do it based on. There are times, of course, when the ice plant needs maintenance or in the last two years where we were working on the new ice plant project. So we did have constrictions on what schedule we could offer. Now that the new ice plant is working and working well. Um, and once we are finished our renovations, we will open and close the ice at the needs of the community. So in the past, there have been summer ice, weeks of summer ice. We would do that again if we had a camp happening or if we had. Minor hockey was going to run local camps. We would definitely do that. So we run the ice based on the needs of the community. We would start later, uh, start earlier and run later. Uh, depending on tournament schedules and all that sort of thing. Uh, we would have run later this season if there were more tournaments to be had. Uh, but there weren't, so we did. Yeah, but that's always available to our community. The second part of your question is the partnership with the Grand Yellowhead School Division and a whole, I mean. I, my brain just went blank on the French schools division.
Some kind of.
Thank you. Um, and so, uh, the partnership right now, we have submitted our request to the joint use agreement updates. Of that, uh, the province requires every so often. And so we've submitted our request, we have not yet heard back from G Y P S D. And I know that C A O Given was also working with them, do you wanna add or is that a summary that works?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, I, I think that really does capture maybe just a little more of a specifics. Um, under provincial legislation, municipalities and school boards are required to enter into what are called JUPAs, Joint Use Public Access Agreements. Um, as Director reads it, we forwarded a proposed. Uh, agreement to Grand Yellowhead, haven't heard back yet. Um, and it may be, uh, over the next little while, we'll continue to work about it administratively, it may be. Uh, that we come back to you to sort of elevate that to the political level of, uh, you know, a formal request from the council of. Spelling Jasper to the board of the school district to look at that issue. Uh, but certainly, these are public assets, we want to ensure that all of the public assets in our community are available for the, the, the benefit of the community at all times. Appreciating that each partner would have costs, um, and that those costs would need to be recovered somehow, so. Um, we're gonna continue to work with that administratively, uh, and if we face any barriers, uh, we may elevate that to the political level. So that we can have some formal correspondence which may receive a bit of a different response that's coming from, from mayor and council than if it was coming just from administration. There is no guarantee, of course, uh, up to their own policies, whether they would want. Whether the school boards would allow the schools to be used for housing. Um, that may be something, A O who's times passed, uh, would leave that to them, you say, but. In any case, we'd wanna ensure that we do have those joint use agreements so that the schools. Outside of school times can be used for more community things like camps. Um, whether or not they're used for housing is, is maybe a different matter, um, and subject for discussion with the school districts.
Thank you, Councilor Hall.
This'll be it for me, I'm almost done, um, I wonder if, again, I have heard from some parents and I could be. Uh, I'm interested in this, I wonder if. Uh, parents or locals going to potential next school board meeting, uh, might. Help or, or, or writing letters to the school board to move, move this along, or, or is it best that we leave it with administration to come back to us at a later date?
Uh, certainly. My under, my understanding is, uh, that school boards, uh, certainly would see themselves as representatives of their communities. Uh, and in the same way that I think elected officials on a, on municipal council, uh. Receive information and, and perspectives from residents at all, all the time. Uh, I think residents should feel comfortable in forwarding their views to their elected representative on the school district. Uh, about their priorities, I, I don't think there's anything untoward about that. Um, I know that, as I said, council members, you receive input from residents all the time. Um, and our school districts are also elected representatives and, and, and a body that, you know, has that representative role. Uh, I encourage members of the public to, to share their views with the school district, um, and the elected officials that are there.
Thank you for that and, um. I just see we have an opportunity for the return of liquor boss in the, uh, arena in the summertime with the ISO. As one of those activities that you never know, somebody may wish to organize. I have a question on the, for the aquatic centers, we're getting into two months away from potentially opening. Um. Are we, uh, all right for staffing, uh, with the amount of time that we've had the activity? Sorry, the aquatic center closed, I know we redeployed some individuals. Some people have taken time to get away, um, but obviously we need to gear up to be able to operate going right into the. Busy period.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, it is a. A challenge that we are already working on, so, uh. Manager Jeremy Toddem is already working with his team on how to best. Uh, either keep, retain the staff we have or train some new ones up so we're ready for, for July. And not only to be open for, you know, whenever we are able to open, we still have weeks of. Cleaning and new water gets put in, the water gets tested, there's all the opening up procedures that we need to staff for as well. So you're right on the money that this is a challenge that we have to navigate and. Uh, those of you who go to Mayette will remember that Mayette last year had restricted hours and that was entirely due to staffing. We hope and we will work towards, uh, being able to fully staff the hours that the community is accustomed to. Um, that will be the first thing that we will do though, is restrict the hours should we be short-staffed. Uh, but it's very good question and we are already working.
Thank you, um. Not seeing any questions from Mayor Ireland, I would then, uh, unless councillors have other questions. Look towards a motion to receive the report for information. Mayor Ireland?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, I'm happy to make that motion that the report be received for information.
Thank you, and we've had some good discussion, unless there's any more, I would call the question, all those in favor? And that is approved, um, unanimously, thank you. We are now at, um, item seven point five. Transit Service Standards Policy and, uh, look to Mr. Given, uh, willing to present this.
Uh, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Melnick, so this item, uh, was originally presented April ninth, but was carried over to this. But was carried over to this meeting, um, I'll just note that the draft policy does have a, a couple of the amendments that were suggested by the, uh. Council committee on the ninth, so administration did work to incorporate those, this is slightly adjusted from what was presented then. So the Transit Service Standards Policy is intended to provide a structured approach to managing and evaluating public transit services in Jasper. Um, by establishing, uh, clear criteria for service level adjustments and expansions and, uh, our operational standards. The policy is intended to support strategic planning investment in public transportation. Um, and ensuring that the service is being delivered in a way that council and the community would wish to see. Uh, the policy also has, uh, a section to foster accountability and transparency, ensuring that public and council are informed about. Service levels and performance metrics of, of the service. The proposed policy outlines principles and practices guiding the development and management of the transit service and covers several key areas. I'll cover them at, at a high level, um, out of the staff report and then maybe go in a little bit deeper detail into the actual policy, but. Those four categories are service warrants. Which help us, uh, develop, which would establish criteria. To assess the need for new services or adjustments to existing services, which include, uh, reduction or removal of services. Um, there is a section on service quality and performance, which would establish standards for service delivery. Around safety, reliability and comfort, um. The next section is around service productivity. Uh, which would help us assess the effectiveness of transit routes and the overall system with respect to, you know, passenger load factors and, uh. Operational subsidy. And, uh, finally a section around transparency, uh, where council can establish clear and consistent. Uh, expectations for open communication stakeholders and establish some requirements for how that communication will happen. Uh, what form and the frequency that would happen. So I'll go now to the policy. Um, I'll maybe just speak to a couple of the small changes that the last committee meeting. Council, uh, suggested it was important to ensure that safety and accessibility were the first, uh. Items in the list of what council is committed to fostering at that transit service, so a transit service that is safe, accessible, efficient. Convenient and reliable way to move around Jasper, so just a slight wording change and you can see those words that are adjusted, highlighted. Uh, but maybe getting more into the specifics, uh, section one of service warrants. Specifies that the municipality will assess the following factors when considering potential new services or when evaluating existing services. So the factors that, this really says, so what should administration and the municipality consider when we're thinking of adding a new route? Adding some new times or, uh, evaluating existing routes or times to see whether they're worthy of continuing. So the factors would be observed traveler demand, observed congestion. Availability of other transportation alternatives and external funding support. The structure of the policy, uh, highlights a number of these areas where the expectation would be. That if council approves those items for inclusion in the policy, administration would then be responsible for going away, establishing specific measures and then reporting. On them to council regularly. The policy is also set up where council can specifically identify individual measures and this section does have some of that. Uh, so you'll see in the next part, it says, in addition to the service warrant factors above, council specifically establishes that. Prior to establishing new routes outside the townsite. The municipality shall require a two-year external funding commitment equal to ninety percent of the forecasted operating cost of a route. Including fleet leasing costs. And any new routes shall be reviewed using service warrants prior to their third operation year and. After the third year of operation, the municipality shall require capital contribution towards the fleet required to continue a route outside the townsite, so. Above, there are those four categories of general service warrants that administration will take away and start to establish the metrics. These three points are very specific, council's specifically saying, this is our expectation. Um, and as council is well aware, uh, we have this request for Parks Canada around the Lee Canyon service and so. That section, we'll see referenced in the Lee Canyon request. Uh, the next category is, uh, service quality and performance. The standards and characteristics that we would be measuring, uh, in order to guide the delivery of the service would be fleet performance standards. Fleet accessibility standards. Sorry, service performance standards, fleet accessibility standards, route design standards. And then, uh, added by committee was stop design standards, added since last committee was, you know, whether there are standards for where we stop, what should those stops look like, they would wait. And in addition to those, uh, um. Higher order ones, uh, this does have some council specified, uh, items. That the service quality expectations of, council specifically establishes that on-time performance target for all regular fixed route services shall be eighty-five percent. So, you know, determining a number like that says that administration. Needs to plan and manage the service in a way that we can meet that metric. We have to report how we're doing on that metric and if we're not able to meet it, then we need to be able to, uh, report why and make adjustments in order to meet it. Um, and a reliability target for all fixed route services shall be ninety-eight percent, meaning that ninety-eight percent of the time, we shall deliver ninety-eight percent. Uh, of the predicted operating hours of the service. Um, again, those are specific numbers, council certainly can adjust them up or down as you would see fit. Uh, this is purely administration's recommendation, but again, building in some specifics so that we can report on a regular basis and. Some of those I think you would have seen in the transit update that we presented, uh, last time. The third last area is the service productivity. And this is really about measuring the performance of individual routes and the overall system. Um, considering the following factors, passenger boardings, so the number of people getting on and off the bus. As well as system revenue and operating subsidy levels, uh, these are really common metrics, uh, that are. Uh, captured and measured in transit systems across Canada and would allow us to compare the effectiveness of Jasper Transit. Uh, and the cost of Jasper Transit against other, uh, transit agencies across the country. Uh, the final section is around transparency. Uh, and commitment that the municipality will support transparent, effective communication with stakeholders about, uh, the transit system. Using quarterly and annual reporting, regular ridership surveys. A dedicated and ongoing customer feedback system and a system capable of providing live vehicle location information. So that's, that's an overview of the policy. Um, under each of those areas, if there were other specific metrics that council wished to explicitly specify. Um, that opportunity absolutely exists. The intention would be for this policy to adapt and evolve over time as new, uh, considerations come forward or as. Council decides that there are additional things that you might like to measure, but I believe that the, uh. The broad categories of service warrants, service quality, performance. Uh, service productivity, transparency, give administration enough guidance. Um, and we're here to hear whether council had any other specifics that they feel might be important to include. Uh, if there were no adjustments, the recommendation in the report is that committee recommend council approve the service, current service standard policy as presented. Obviously, council could also choose to amend transit service standard policy and then recommend it forward to council. Or you could direct administration to make additional changes and bring the policy back with a future committee. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, Deputy Mayor Melnick, there's the, the introduction and overview of the Transit Service Standards Policy and the recommendation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, councillors, are there any questions for administration? Councillor Keller, nope.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, um, just last venture, um, when the, um. I'm not sure, but the inherent just I've seen it, um, when the school bus. So the school board said, we're not running, but in Jasper we could have ran. How would that, and at that time you said that should be part of our policy, where would that fit in here?
Uh, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, so that would really be around, um. Service quality and performance, um, so we have the measures around service quality expectations and the. Uh, reliability targets, meaning that we're operating ninety-eight percent of the time, administration would have to look and, uh, see whether or not, um. A discontinuance of service by the school board would impact our on-time performance. Uh, alternatively, council could establish, um, you know. Could either establish an expectation that the municipality shall continue to run, uh, transit and. All transit services, um, up to blank temperature is, is a way that that could be done. Or if council didn't wish to be so specific, could provide direction that. Uh, the standards and characteristics under service quality and performance would be alignment with, uh, standards of other agencies. Yeah, so, so you could either do it in a very specific, the municipality shall keep running, um, school services. Uh, up to minus forty. Uh, or you could say the municipality shall align its school service standard with that of Grand Yellowhead. Both schools would check, both those would be quite specific. Uh, and would provide the clarity for administration and for the school board and for, for parents that go on that service. Um, the other one would be to tell administration to go and figure out what the appropriate standard would be and to develop an administrative procedure for that.
I think that's important because that was a huge piece of feedback I thought last year that, uh. The children were ready to go to school, the school was open, um. And the buses, I mean, P W T were ready to go and then they got canceled at quarter day in the morning that these kids. Gotta stay a month for the day or the parents had to bring them. And I think that we should build something into our policy so that, you know, we're a small town, it's not like we're. Edmonton or Grand Prairie or somewhere, you know, or we're, we're out in the country like coming into Hinton where you have highway forty like, you know, I mean, um. Basically, you know, we have J P L that's out of town, but then, you know, we have a few pickups in town and I think it's important. People wanna run the service that we have a standard in there, uh, in order to match what we need in Jasper.
Councillor, she will be given?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Ireland, so my suggestion would be that if council, if committee wished to add a, add a. A specific expectation, and we have built an opportunity for that in the policy and, uh, this is exactly the kind of discussion we're hoping to have. Um, this again would be under the, uh, section two service quality and performance. Um, so below the on-time performance target, the reliability target, um, we could, uh, insert, you know, the council specifically establishes that. The municipality's school service policies shall align with those of Grand Yellowhead School Division. Here, um, now, that would be very specific and it would say that whatever Grand Yellowhead does for the rest of their system is what we do. Um, and it would also recognize that the student service, um, really, I mean, in essence, we are a contractor to Grand Yellowhead and we are subject to. However, they choose to run their service for that portion of it, um. In terms of, uh, awareness of whether a route is running or not, parents, uh, have been directed by Grand Yellowhead that they have their own independent school bus app. And people are supposed to be finding out that way, um, but having this in the policy would eliminate that. Discrepancy where it might be different in Jasper than it is in what the school board is announcing generally. And we had that situation because on the, I think at the end of that very cold leak. And we had that situation because on the, I think at the end of that very cold week, we aligned with Grand Yellowhead's approach and cancel service. But on the Monday, they were proposing to continue to have canceled service, and we said, well, we don't, we, we can run here, we might as well run. Um, and so in that situation, had we been aligned with Grand Yellowhead's service policy would have provided more clarity for, for users of the service. But it would have meant that we would have been closed on, on that Monday. So, you know, I, I think it would be reasonable for us as to be an essentially a contractor to Grand Yellowhead to commit and make it clear to everybody that since it's their service, that when it comes to the uh, operational policies, that they determine those things. And we could do that by including that specifically as, as I suggested in that, uh, by adding an additional bullet.
Thank you for that, and um, in the instance, if, for example, Grand Yellowhead was to cancel service, we would still have the opportunity to continue running our local service because that would be covered under, um, I guess a different bullet point. Since we'd be going through the morning run and then any afternoon uh, run from the school would be based on what Grand Yellowhead is determining for their students. The rest of the service would be independent, and we can see that on the uh, national app and, and so on, that services continuing.
That, that's right, Deputy Mayor Malik. So my suggestion would be, and again, if, if committee wished to include something like that, I think I probably have that raising. Uh, again, I think it was something along the lines of student services shall align with the policies and operational procedures of Grand Yellowhead School Division. Again, that's, that's very clear. I can certainly make that adjustment, so if committee wished to recommend the policy as amended to council, we could make that, that inclusion.
Other comments? Um, looking to Mayor Allen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malik. Through you to Mr. Given, um, with respect to service warrants, the word that is used twice there is observed traveler demand. Observations can be of, of many types. I wonder whether we might want to tighten that language to be um, suggestive of some measurement or quantifiable in some way rather than it looked to me um, that it was some way. So I just offer that as a suggestion that it, it, the wording suggests that it could just be anecdotal, not um, in any sense measured, and I, I think we would be better served if we could measure, quantify both demand and potentially objection. Um, or pardon me, congestion. On the second part of that, though, that, and my, my concern is that um, with respect to service warrants to establish new routes, it seems to me that those provisions imply a request from a third party, so similar to the Parks Canada request to add a route to Moline Canyon. But it doesn't say that specifically. And so the, the third bullet, um, after the third year of operation will require a capital contribution. It doesn't say from whom. I assume it would be whoever requests the route. I, I think we should itemize that um, in the policy because it, it occurs to me that this would prohibit us from establishing new routes outside of town for the benefit of our own residents unless there is somebody to tag with um, ninety percent of the operating cost. So for example, if we chose to add a route to go to Lake Edith, um, either to take local residents out there, and I, I do recognize that we go to Lake Annette anyway, but we could go around further on the Moline Road to Lake Edith for people from in-town to access and potentially for Lake Edith residents to access town. And they are residents, but I'm not sure that we would expect them to pay ninety percent of, of that cost. We haven't done that for any other residents. Similarly, if we decided to add a route to access the beach at Pyramid, we would be restricted under this policy from doing that unless we had someone with whom we could um, force a, a contribution. And so it just seems to me that all of those are predicated on a third-party request, and in that regard, it's fair. So um, if Marmot, for example, requested that we run a bus up there, um, that might be applicable, and in the case of Parks Canada, it could be applicable. But it seems to me that it limits what we can do as a municipality for our own residents, and we can avoid that by just adding some, some clearer language.
Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Malik for, for Maryland. So uh, Mary, you, you hit on it. The wording there was uh, intentionally narrow and specific. Uh, I think uh, there is in our uh, multi-jurisdictional certain environment, uh, and administration intentionally included uh, these terms to make it specific to, okay, if there's somebody outside the townsite. And, and I think that there is some perception that services outside the townsite should be funded more heavily by external parties. Uh, and so administration attempted to incorporate that here. If council felt that that were limiting uh, and wanted to have more flexibility for the, for municipal council to determine uh, that a route should go outside the townsite because council thinks that it's important for service to residents uh, and to, to our public. Absolutely, you would, you know, I mean, ultimately, council has full authority under anything. Um, but if we wanted to amend the wording in these bullets to, to soften that a bit, uh, it could be just about um, adding some specificity that we, we mean routes outside the townsite required or requested by external parties. Right? So in that first bullet, it says, prior to establishing new routes of this, outside the townsite, the municipality shall require, and so on. We could amend that to say, prior, prior to establishing new routes requested by other parties outside the townsite, the municipality shall acquire, because that specifies that the municipality has its ability to establish a route outside the townsite if it wants. But when a third party comes to the municipality requesting a route outside the townsite, in that case, we require them to provide. So Mayor Allen, I, I understand what you're saying. And that's a proposal for how we could potentially provide that nuance that doesn't limit municipal councils' authority to consider routes in the future.
I'm sorry, um, Deputy Mayor Malik, but if I, if I might respond, um, Mr. Given has, has captured exactly what I was suggesting, that if that first bullet referenced um, establishing new routes outside the townsite at the request of a third party, and the third bullet indicated that we would require the capital contribution from that requesting third party, then that, to me, resolves the issue. It doesn't mean that council um, would rush out to add a bunch of other routes, but if we think at some point that there are other routes available and there is no one um, to take the, from which we can take the capital contribution, we shouldn't be limited in, in um, providing a higher level of service to our residents if in future council thinks that's appropriate.
So I'm um, hearing there'll be some potential adjustments to any sort of motion going forward. Um, any other comments? Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malik. My question is around um, service productivity and the two factors, passenger boardings and then revenue and subsidy levels, are they equal in their, I guess their scoring? Because I, I kind of think passenger boardings and revenue are, go hand in hand. Subsidy, I feel like is maybe something different or?
Deputy Mayor Malik uh, for Councillor Hall, um, they could, so revenue and subsidy could maybe be separated um, into independent items. There isn't, uh, administration isn't proposing to provide different weights between the factors, the, you know, the, because ultimately that is, you know, council may decide that if people are using a service, that's what it was intended for, and the subsidy level doesn't matter. I hesitate saying that because I think the subsidy level does matter, and I know that every council would consider that, you know, along with the utilization of the, of the service. So administration is proposing what categories of information should be measured, and then ultimately reported to council, the public, and it would be up to council, the public to decide the relative weight that they would give one of those things. Uh, there may be a um, there may be a route um, that nobody ever goes on, but somebody is willing to pay for it. So we've got very low subsidy level, uh, very high revenue, but very low uh, passenger boardings. And council might say, great, let's keep doing that. Or conversely, council could say, this doesn't make sense to do, even though we're getting good money for this. Nobody gets on it. We could better use, you know, our fleet and resources and, you know, for better, whatever it comes. Even though we're getting good, so the point is not necessarily for administration to decide what should carry more weight. It's for administration to capture the information, can report it, so that council can make informed decisions about where you would place the weight.
Anything further? No? With burns suggested changes, um, we would be looking for this to be revised, and should this come back to a committee of the whole prior to going to uh, council?
From an administrative perspective, Deputy Mayor Malik, we're certainly happy either way. Uh, I can report to you what I believe I heard is the proposed changes. Uh, if I got them correct, then committee could feel comfortable uh, recommending that council approve as amended. And then at the next regular council meeting, you would see an amended version of this. Um, and, or, uh, committee could direct administration to take it away, reduce the amendments, and then come to the next committee. Uh, either way, this is totally fine. The issue of having uh, standards was raised in January. Uh, administration certainly knows that there's a desire from the community to see more formalization of how the system is operated. Um, so my suggestion would be that if council is comfortable, moving it forward uh, might be useful. Um, recognize, of course, that it's intended to be a policy that would be updated probably many times over the next while. Um, so I can report to you what I believe I heard. Um, and if I've got it right, then, then you might feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, we'll go with that, and we'll, we'll hear the, if he captured them the essence of the changes that were discussed, and then uh, then our, our motion from uh, a councillor.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Malik. So the first would be under service warrants. Uh, in the two bullet points where we have the word observed, so observed traveler demand and observed congestion. Uh, I think I would suggest replacing that with quantifiable traveler demand and quantifiable congestion. So rather than just, uh, to Mayor, rather than just saying, well, we, we think that there is, it's saying, you need to be able to provide some data, some numbers that needs to be quantifiable rather than just observed. Uh, so that would be one. The uh, next would be in that same category of service warrants, but getting into the council's uh, specified items. Uh, that first bullet point would be amended, uh, to say something along the lines of prior to establishing new routes at the request of a third party outside the townsite. Hence the one. Uh, and then the third bullet under that same section, uh, after the third year of operation, the municipality shall require capital contribution from the requesting third party toward the fleet required to continue a route outside the townsite. So again, just providing that flexibility for future councils to, to do as they see fit. But being very clear that if somebody comes to the municipality asking for a route outside the townsite, they need to have some skin in the game. Uh, and then uh, the final one that I had was under service quality and performance, adding a new council-specified bullet uh, that would clarify that uh, student service operations shall align with the policies of Grand Yellowhead Public School Division. So if, if the essence of all of those were correct, my wording may change slightly, uh, just as, you know, for, for grammar or whatever. Um, but if council is comfortable, we got pretty close there, I would be comfortable making those amendments and being able to return it to you in a cemented form of the, uh, extra evening council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Given. So um, once that uh, revealed, the changes, is there a councillor uh, willing to move or to make the motion to um, recommend council, I guess, receive approved and amended transit service standard of policy as presented? Councillor Hall, thank you. Any discussion? Your question?
Uh, just to be clear, that motion is to approve the transit service standards policy as amended?
Yes. There will be no other discussion, I would call a question always in favor. And that's clearly down in the scene. Thank you for that all. Um, we are moving to agenda item seven point six, which is related to what we just talked about, Moline Canyon service request. Uh, welcome, Mr. Given, um, my representation of this item.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Malik. Uh, so I'm here with the recommendation that council receive the update on the administrative discussions regarding the proposed transit service to Moline Canyon information. Um, and at this time, the committee direct administration from Parks Canada, that we would be unable to offer the proposed route for the summer of twenty-four, but that we'd be willing to reconsider for the, prior to the twenty-twenty-five season. Uh, alternatively, um, administration, you can say that administration has uh, confirmed that if council wished, we may be able to offer this. Uh, subject to, you know, obviously arrangements with funding from Parks Canada uh, for the twenty-twenty-four season. Um, subject to, you know, whatever conditions council wishes to impose. Obviously, we have a draft policy, uh, thank you, just for, uh, in the process of amending. So administration did lean a little bit on that policy. Um, and we have some alternatives that are reflective of the policy direction. Um, but because it was only a draft form, we couldn't, we didn't have that guidance completely in place. So on February thirteenth of this year, uh, council received a request from Parks Canada interested in exploring the concept of service from the townsite to Moline Canyon. Council referred that request to administration for a report back at a future committee, the whole meeting, so this is that report. Uh, we have uh, had administrative discussions with Parks Canada about this, and so they're aware of uh, the pricing information that are provided in here. Uh, parks, as uh, anybody from the community knows, uh, parks reports that Moline Canyon is one of the most visited locations in Jasper National Park, um, welcoming three to three thousand to five thousand people per day in the summer. They see significant congestion issues, which they have quantified, now that that's referencing our policy. Uh, on average, they report that it's ninety-four percent full. Um, and reach its full capacity on eighty-five percent of summer days, so um, it is almost full all of the time and completely full most of the time, I guess would be another way to say that. Administration has uh, worked with our contractor to identify what the full cost recovery, and what would it cost to offer uh, the service, is it possible? Our estimate is that the hourly cost would be approximately a hundred and eighty dollars per operation hour. Um, and for a seven-day-per-week service, uh, operating seven hours a day, the cost, the monthly cost would be approximately thirty-seven thousand uh, eight hundred dollars per month of service. If the standards of the draft policy were applied, so that gets to that ninety percent funding, so that, so full cost recovery is a hundred percent funding from the external party. Uh, ninety percent funding would equal a hundred and sixty-two dollars per hour or thirty-four thousand and twenty dollars per month in operation cost. So we provided that information to Parks Canada. It really is with them to say, okay, you know, uh, they had not identified whether they had current funding available to do this. Um, if we follow again the draft policy, we would say that before we would start that service, we would require a commitment of a minimum of uh, two years, uh, or I would say for this, if this was intended to be a seasonal type service, of the minimum of two seasons of funding towards that. So that we could, you know, have time to assess whether the service is functional a lot. so that we could, you know, have time to assess whether the service is functional or viable. Um, the numbers that are provided, uh, don't account for potential revenue. Um, so if council choose, chose to approve the ninety percent, uh, contribution from parks, that additional ten percent, uh, may be made up from passenger revenue, of course, you know, not knowing, because we haven't delivered this service in the past, uh, that is unknown, but, um, any passenger revenue above the ten percent difference, uh, could reduce the Parks Canada operating contribution. Now, those types of details would be something that administration would finalize in negotiation with Parks Canada if council was to direct us to, uh, support the launch of the service. So, um, uh, finally, on the financial side, any additional costs at this time, you know, are not accounted for in the approved twenty twenty four operation, operational budget, and so it would need to be fully covered by Parks Canada and or fair revenue, uh, for it to be, uh, cost neutral on the twenty twenty four budget. So, uh, at this time, administration is not recommending to move forward. But, uh, we have confirmed that it would be possible if parks confirmed that they have the funding available. Um, so, uh, we have two alternatives for council, uh, either to directly, you know, uh, inform parks that they need some more time, and maybe it would benefit everybody. There's more lead time prior to launching, uh, that service. Um, or alternatively, um, we have availability, we could make that work if parks have the money. Uh, that's sort of the essence of the two alternatives that are there for council's consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Uh, counselors, do you have any questions? I would, um, maybe just start with a question, um. When they said the summertime, parks requesting a summertime, was it, um, at the, you know, sixty days or ninety days that, uh, we were looking at or they were looking at?
I don't believe that they had specified, uh, because they also showed an interest in, they really wanted to understand what the costs were. Uh, so we have that costing information, and then the next part of the discussion, I think, then would be, okay, so is it sixty, ninety? Uh, is it a, is a, is it only a seasonal service, or is it a, a yearly, year-round service with reduced frequency at different times of year? We have absolutely not had that discussion with them. They basically said, what would the, for their budgeting purposes, uh, and for their internal purposes of trying to identify whether or not they might have available funding, they needed to have a, a higher magnitude, uh, of cost. Uh, we provided that to them. The next steps, again, if there was an interest in moving forward, would be determine that, the length of the service.
Thank you for that. And, uh, just with that, I want to just continue, I assume that this would be a continuous loop on the hub to Milling Canyon and back. And it would not be an extension of the JPL loop, this would be its own standalone loop.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, that's absolutely how administration, uh, was viewing it, is that it would essentially be, uh, additional spoke from the hub. Um, so right now, our service is set up to run with essentially one vehicle. Uh, so it is one vehicle running all of those routes. Uh, there's never a point where we have two vehicles. This would be an additional vehicle and an additional driver on to run a dedicated route. And so there would need to be some, obviously, coordination with our existing timetables, so that somebody coming in from campgrounds, for example, um, that the, that they would arrive at the hub at a time that would mean that they, you know, would be able to connect out, so there would be some planning and coordination that would be required. Um. I, I don't believe from an administrative perspective that they're getting challenged and adding that on, if council wished to go forward. We're in the process of establishing our, our route schedule, uh, for the summertime. Uh, we're going to do that in the next week and be ready to go with our contractors, so we can time those out. This would essentially be an add-on, that we would make sure that that service fit with our core existing service. Um, but parks hasn't defined how many trips per day they would like to see. Uh, we've done some high-level sort of measuring of, well, how long does it take to get out there? Uh, we did have some consideration of whether there might be the potential for a route like this that is leaving from the hub to stop at JPL and then continue up to Milling Lake, because that would have the added benefit of increasing count of JPL service. Uh, but that had not been incorporated in, in the plan. Again, we really started at, how much does it cost to operate per hour? And then the determination about how many hours and what frequency is, uh, would be a next step in the conversation if we were to.
Thank you. Counselor Keller.
Just on that, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, to you, to Mr. Given. Um, the contractor, did they specify, like, if they were to, uh, this route, um, like, that it had to be certain amount of hours, certain amount of days, certain amount of time, or? Like, what, what is their expectation?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick for Counselor Keller. So the, the contractor, uh, in our conversations was, was quite flexible and said that they could figure things out, and they gave us surprising information. It is, of course, subject to, um, developing, you know, an amount of work that would make it feasible to be able to have the additional drivers that would be required. Um, so that, again, would be those next steps, but our contractors indicated that if the municipality of Parks Canada wished to launch this kind of service, they would be able to support it. We have the benefit, I suppose, of, uh, having the, the larger white, you know, the forty-passenger white bus that we have been using in town, not part of the rival, the yellow bus. Uh, so there is fleet that exists in town that could serve this function relatively well. Um, so that was a certain one barrier that, that would be removed. Um, the second would just be around timing, because we wouldn't want to get into a situation where we would be sort of three drivers all at once because of shift changeover or whatever. Um, so we would have to make sure that the planning of the service um, reflected the realities of staffing, but our contractor was more than, uh, suggested that they were capable of working with us on that, to find something that would work. Um, and that they were willing to do so.
Counselors, any other questions? So at this point, we have a, uh, recommendation that, um, from administration, that, uh, we not pursue this opportunity at this time, and, um, well, being second here. And so I think we would need a motion, uh, uh, basically suggesting that we are not going to pursue anything at this time, so looking for a council member to make a motion accordingly. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I would make the recommended, recommended motion. Um, while I think it's very exciting and, and telling that, you know, the first six months of our service, we already have an external group wanting to add a route. I'd like to see a year and a full summer, um, with the service first. Um, but I'm very I, I would support looking into this for twenty twenty five, especially considering tourism dollars are set to increase by two and a half, which means tourism, tourism will increase by two and a half times, which is a lot more people in our area, and that parking lot's full most of the time right now. It'll be extra full, or people won't be able to enjoy the canyon. So I, I would make the recommended, recommended motion that committee receive the update on the administration, administrative discussions regarding proposed transit service to Milling Canyon information, and that committee direct administration to inform Parks Canada that the municipality will not be able to offer the proposed route in the summer of twenty twenty four, but would be willing to reconsider the issue prior to the twenty twenty five season.
Thank you, and we have a, uh, motion on the floor, and I'm looking on the screen, Mayor Ireland, did you wish to comment on the motion?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um. I'm just concerned with, um, the second clause, although I, I support the intent. Um, but if Parks was to come back with something else for the twenty twenty four season or some portion of it, I don't want to exclude that, that possibility. Um, this is an unfolding situation. I think the, the more that we can demonstrate that buses are good, that they produce, um, a positive visitor experience on which our community absolutely relies. Um, if this is a good thing, and Parks is going to pay a hundred percent of the cost, then if they can come back with another proposal, um, for, for some portion of this year, I'd be prepared to consider that. Um, I, I'm supportive of the motion to say, um, right now, um, it doesn't look like it's in the cards, but I don't want to forestall any further discussions, and I would encourage parks, if they can reconfigure their ask, that they not necessarily wait until twenty twenty five to come back.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um. Counselors, any other comments? Um, I think in, in my question about the Parks ask, it was what time period they would be looking at, and, uh, certainly, you know, the canyon is open and, and busy from mid-May right through till mid-October, but if Parks is only asking for a specific period and would be willing to fund that period, uh, potentially Parks might consider this a pilot project, um, which would allow us to get the data that we would need to see. I, I can see where Mayor Ireland is going, and, um, are you concerned, Mayor Ireland, that the, the current wording would not allow us to look at this if Parks came back, or just so we should be open if Parks comes back?
A, a little of, of both, yes. It, it seems to, it seems to suggest that we won't reconsider until twenty twenty five. Um, but I would be open to, well, maybe not reconsider, but to consider a different proposal if they were able to come up with one, and so, um, the, we might just end, um, the motion with, um, at the, at the summer of twenty twenty four, and just leave it open, uh, rather than suggest that we don't want to reconsider until next year.
I'm looking to, uh, first of all, CEO Given, um, and then, uh, I think what I was hearing was a friendly amendment, but let's, um, Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, so, you know, if council had more openness to, to considering, um, I think maybe some additional direction to administration would, might be helpful. Um, you know, so receive the updated information. There's a request and administration provided that, so that ties that off. Um, could be that committee direct administration requests a specific, uh, service proposal details from Parks Canada and returned to a future committee meeting. So that would be, you know, that would say, well, we're not going to, we're not going to just do it now, but Parks, do you have some, something specific, uh, in mind? And in the absence of Parks returning with anything, uh, or having anything specific for the twenty twenty four season, then obviously administration would take note for your action on this. But it would leave open the possibility that if Parks did come back and say, well, this is what we'd like to do, then administration would have that latitude to come back to council.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um, I would be open to amending the last part of the motion, even just to direct administration to request specific route details from Parks Canada for the twenty twenty four season. Or, or would, will that work?
Mr. Given is nodding his head. Um, Mayor Ireland, does that capture the intent, uh, of the revision?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
With that, um, if there's no other discussion, I'll call a question. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Um. So, um, with the, with the public, we're going to take a five-minute break, uh, come back in about twelve, um, oh, five, give or take, and, uh, we'll continue on with the range of the agenda and then move on into encumber. But we'll just be back in about five minutes. Back everyone, thank you. Um. We are now at item seven point seven, which we had removed the audited consolidated financial statements and replaced it with item seven point seven, schedule of special meeting uh, regarding the, um, audited financial statements. Um, and Mr. Given, I think, um, we have an opportunity to find another day here where we have, um, the auditors available for presentation?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Melnick. So administration, uh, would request that council establish a special regular meeting of council for April thirtieth, that one thirty. Uh, administration has already confirmed that our auditors are also available at that time to make the presentation. Um, and the reason that the prior to April, uh, timeline is important is because, uh, provincial legislation requires the municipality, uh, and councils to approve audited financial statements by the end of April. Um, for the last number of years, as council will remember, uh, the municipality was not able to make that timeline because of the challenge in incorporating the, the West Hillhead Regional Waste Management Authority's audited financial statements, so ours, they were delayed, and that delayed us being able to complete ours. Um, I certainly would like to make sure that we're in alignment with provincial legislation. Um, and so administration would, would request that, uh, council authorize, um, establishing a special meeting on April thirtieth. This is a fifth Tuesday, uh, typically unfortunate council, sorry, that, uh, that's usually a day where we don't have as many council meetings. Uh, but I would note that the morning of that day is actually already booked with an interim government meeting with Parks Canada. Uh, so administration thought it might be appropriate just to take a bit of time that afternoon to complete this legislatively required piece of business.
Thank you. Um, counselors, any questions for Mr. Given? If there are none, then I believe we just need a motion to establish a special meeting for thirtieth of April for the purposes of reviewing the financials with the auditors, uh, and to approve them prior to the end of the month.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, there may be one additional piece of business, uh, and when we establish a special council meeting, I think we need to address the specific items. Um, so the additional piece of business would be a, uh, a labor relations item. Uh, and so we would say that would have two items of business, one, the audited financial statements, and the other would be to address, uh, a labor relationship.
Great, so thank you. Um. Is there a counselor willing to make that motion? Counselor Keller, thank you. Any discussion? There you see no hands up. I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously with four counselors. Thank you. Moving on now to item, uh, eight, the motion action list.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, administration has some recommendations for updates. Um, maybe I'll just go through the, uh, ones where we had an April target date, um, or recommending that they be bumped. Uh, the first is a clean energy improvement program. Uh, I know that we are sort of on a short leash with that one, and, and, uh, there's an expressed desire, at least one councilor is saying, well, we're not going to be able to do this, and maybe we should just, uh, there, unless. Uh, administration would still like the chance to have an opportunity, we, now that we have our uh, municipal energy environment manager position in place, you know, we're setting up a work plan for them. This would be one of the first acts, so we'd like a little bit more time still with that, so we're recommending deferring that to me. The habitat for the arts item, uh, this really is about administration having a conversation, uh, in discussion with Director Reed. He's reported that, uh, it's just a matter of coordinating times where we get, uh, both parties together, have a conversation, we'll be able to report back, so. Again, this is sort of a continuance, but not because that item isn't being addressed, it's just a matter of coordination. Uh, the twenty twenty four mill rates, um, given the full agenda that we had, uh, today, um, and the complexity of the items of the IT master plan and the intended auditor's financial presentation, uh, we actually removed this item, so we'll bring that to the first committee meeting in May. Um, but we did tag some things off the list. First, the Parks Canada, Milling Canyon Transit Service Request. Council's last report back, we've provided that, obviously some new direction from council that would, would replace that item. Uh, and then the Transit Service Standards Policy is also been, and so those items could be, uh, deleted. So with those two deletions and three deferrals, administration would recommend council approved the updates to the motion action list as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the other, other items.
Counselors, do you have any questions or CEO Given? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Milne, I, I wonder if we should add, I don't, we've already passed this item, but I wonder if we should add the request to mo, for Milline Canyon Transit Service to our intergovernmental meeting on Tuesday, or?
Deputy Mayor Milne, uh, for council hall, I, you know, I think that's, uh, a very easy thing to do, we can certainly have that administrative discussion, uh, and at the administrative level, uh, state of parks, if councils ask us if there's a specific proposal, I think council could reiterate that, and it's, uh, not a problem to add that to the agenda for the intergovernmental.
Thank you. Any other questions for CEO Given? And now looking for a motion on the, uh, motion action list. Councillor Keller.
I made a motion to accept motion action list with the others.
Thank you. Motion on the floor, no other conversation, I'll call the question, all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Councillor, upcoming meetings, uh, look around the room and look for councillors to, uh, indicate if they have, uh, reports or in, uh, upcoming meetings. Um, uh, the three of us here in the room, we're looking, we have no upcoming meetings, uh, um. Uh, before we get into the special meeting, of which there won't be a section for upcoming mi, meetings, will there, that won't be reviewed during that meeting? So what was mentioned was the intergovernmental affairs meeting on April thirtieth. Um, the other item that I see is we don't have an emergency magic management, uh, uh, session, um. And is that, um, I think of all, um, uh, the emergency management committee, but also is that with, uh, other administration as well? Are the first?
Deputy Mayor Milne, I'm sorry, I'm unprepared, I don't have that answer to him. Mike will just say so when, when that's the case.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Milne, in my calendar, I'm showing this coming Thursday, the twenty-fifth, an indigenous relations session at Palisades, is that still happening?
Deputy Mayor Milne for council hall, uh, I, that one I am prepared for, yes, it is. Um, so we have been invited, uh, so Parks Canada hosts their indigenous forum regularly. My understanding is that we've been invited to an afternoon session, um, so to continue to build relationships between municipality and, uh, the indigenous partners, uh, who are gonna be taking part, I think there's a smaller, uh, opportunity for um, some members of administration to attend lunch, but I think that there's the invitation, I think, should be for the afternoon session, and that's the one that is with the council.
Thank you for that. Um, looking to Mayor Island, if you have any, um, upcoming meetings to report.
Uh, nothing, um, to report about, uh, anything that is upcoming, um, I think involves others, in any event, the indigenous relations on Thursday, and, uh, you mentioned the uh, emergency preparedness, that, um, is an invitation, I think, to our emergency, um, management committee, that's not the right word, but it's, it's both the agency and the committee, um, and I, I've checked mine, and those are the invitees, and that is May first. Um, and then otherwise, um, other things involve all of council, and everybody will be aware.
Great, thank you for that. Um, looking at, at upcoming events, um, on the twenty-fourth of the month, the wildlife preparedness, wildlife preparedness information session in the evening in the multi-purpose hall, and then following that, we have the community-wide fire smart day. And we had mentioned already the intergovernmental affairs. A week on Sunday will be the Day of Awareness of Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Children, followed by the emergency preparedness week. During that week, we'll have an open house on May seventh at the Emergency Services Building. Um, scheduled events include the State of the Municipality address, um, at the evening meeting of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce, which would be on May eighth. Network continues on the sixteenth at Pyramid Lake Lodge. And we have already noticed of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Annual General Meeting on June the ball. I, uh, the only other item that I'll mention, South Bush Lee and self-promotion of the Rotary Club, the Fiesta Suit Castle, um, event at the, uh, Suit Castle Restaurant on Sunday with fundraiser. And, uh, beyond that, do, is there any other events that we're missing that we are aware of? There being none. We had changed item eleven to an in-camera session, and at this point, we will be moving into in-camera. Uh, we will only be coming out of in-camera to adjourn the meeting. So there'll be no, um, business from the in-camera session, which we'll need to deal with in regular session. So I'd like to thank everyone who have, um, taken time today to, uh, watch the meeting, um, and also, uh, we look forward to, um, having you back, I believe, next, uh, Tuesday afternoon, so there'll be, uh, special meeting, um, regarding the two items, uh, that will be presented, that being the financial statements and, uh, labor relations. So thank you very much, everyone, and, uh, I would like to see or have a motion to move in camera. Thank you councillor Keller, I was in favor. Thank you, that is carried.